The regular meeting of the Town Council of September 20th, 21.
Recording in progress.
The regular meeting of September 20th, 21 to order. Thank you for those that are in attendance and those that are watching us virtually. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing when we're finished.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a moment of silence for Mr. Richard Fusco, a former member of the Town Council. Sue, would you do the roll call, please?
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Ken Demirz.
Here.
Robert Vasina.
Here.
Jeffrey Damaris.
Here.
Anthony Debona. Louis Raza. Robert Ritalik.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for the regular? Oh, public comments?
Public comments.
Heaven forbid we miss that. Is there anyone that would like to address the Town Council? Mr. Mickle, before you begin, I have the answers to all of your questions from the last meeting, which I will give under Chairman's comments. Just so you have that information.
Madam Chairman, you took all my requests away.
Sorry.
I've got them outlined in red also. There's a few I'd like to go over, though. And I'm going to go all the way to the bottom. For my comments on the public comment and public participation, you know, maybe one of these days you can explain why you're so against public participation. I went and reviewed a lot of the old town meetings and it's on some of them, it's off on some of them, it's on the front and the back on others. It seems to go with the flow somehow. One of the videos that I had recorded a long time ago at the Trumbull School had Richie Fusco in the Town Council. So that was well said. The year-end adjustments, I think I've answered that myself. Of course they will. Architectural studies. I've been after the Town Manager for a long while to read them, and I'm sure he's going to say, "Fine, just give me a call." So I'll wait for that. Restoring the general fund, we can wait for next year to do that. Now, the rent on the Sunset Grill. The only lease I have is 2014, and the new rate structure is not on that one. So my question is, is there a new lease? The town hall costs, somebody can add up and give me the numbers, that'll be fine. And the last one is the website. It was excellent, well done, easy to navigate. But I do have some suggestions. The search engine on that is a Google search engine, and it gives you everything under the sun but what you're really looking for. So I think some more fine tuning of the search engine might be very handy. For example, if I'm looking for something in the Town Council, I would just have answers in the Town Council. I'm not sure how hard or easy to do, but it would certainly make it more useful. I'd sort of like to have a plan to get the historical files on the website to find out when that can be done. Another really good point I'd like to make about the videos, when you look at the videos, you get all of them. I think YouTube has the ability to do channels, for example, all the Town Council meetings, all the P&amp;Z meetings. So you can get to the type of meeting you want relatively quickly. And the last thing, I think I'm going to be satisfied tonight. Where's the org chart? I think it's going to show up on the website very soon. And other questions, I've noticed we're very diligent about masks here, and that's appreciated. And the police chief gave a very good message to the school board about the requirement in town buildings. There are some meetings that it's not enforced or regulated appropriately, and I'll talk to the Town Manager after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council?
Catherine Camer, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. There's scuttle about town, about why we don't have a deputy chief hired yet. It's been a long time, I won't bother to say because it's hearsay, what I've heard. But I do want to say that, once again, if our Town Manager has anything to do with the process, I believe that's improper because his son works in the department. I know that according to charter, that's who would handle, you know, make the approval, but I believe that that should be given to our Assistant Town Manager because it's a conflict, it's unethical, and it's a conflict. And it should have been, it should have been established at the hiring that that wouldn't happen, but here we are again with another person in that department looking to be hired and his supervisor or even hiring would be at the approval of the dad of someone in the department. That does not happen in the private sector at all. It would never be allowed. So, you know, I don't know why we're doing it here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council?
Good evening. Joe Vaiton from Ordinary Joes in Oakville. And we're here with a few neighbors tonight, and we were just, you know, curious if what was anything new going on with the water problem that we're having down there with water coming through the properties. And I know I've been speaking with Mark and he's, you know, doing everything he can, but I, we just would maybe see if we can get an update.
We will, we will have comment from the Town Manager further in the meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Council?
My name is Karen McGrath at 259 Buckingham Street regarding the water situation. The neighbor that lives next door to me where the pipe begins, where the water is not draining properly. This deed says that, and you can all read it, says that the Oakville Fire District has a right of way to their property to maintain that pipe. That's what the deed says, okay? The answer I got when I mentioned that one time in my backyard with a bunch of people that came to visit was that, "Oh, we don't want to go back that far." Well, yeah, I do, okay? I've 42 years with this problem, and all I hear is, "No, it's not our problem, not our problem." Well, it's not my problem. Nobody told me when I bought that house that there was a problem, okay? Now, we were also told that we were going to get that, part of the pipe is definitely clogged, that that part of the pipe was going to be blown out by some machine, I guess, that the town had purchased or whatever. Then they told us, "Oh, we can't do that because you don't have pipes, you have culvert." Well, my deed says pipe. Today, I listened to the September 9th meeting of the Conservation Commission. I just told you they were going to blow out the pipe. The truth is that Paul Jessel did not want the town to blow out the pipe because it would mean too much liability for the town. That's what they said at this meeting. So, that was baloney. Then, my friend and I went to Public Works, I believe it was, and talked to some of the guys up there. And they said, "Oh, yeah, you know, Town Manager's trying to get FEMA." We had talked about that. "But we'll pay 75% and you guys will each pay 25%." No, no. I've already paid a fortune to have my basement done by...
Janeski.
They all know. Janeski. And I'm still getting water now with these storms that we've been having this year. I have sandbags all over my back. I can't even use my home. Now, how would you all feel if your home was like that? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Michael McGrath, Karen's husband. Just a couple of things that she missed.
Excuse me. It's really hard for us to understand with the masks, so if you could get close to the mic, that helps a little. That's wonderful.
Fine. Just a couple of points that my wife missed. Since we've had this water in the backyard, the fence, the six-foot vinyl fence that we have in the backyard, three sections have been blown out. There's been a rut from the continuous water running that has now brought the ground down to the edge of the pipe. Actually, Joe didn't mention it, but part of the fence, the stockade fence that they had to block, their property, is also blown out. Now, I'm sitting here, and I've never been to one of these meetings before, and I look up and I see "Working for you." And I'm, my question is, when? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming, too.
Okay.
Donna Huddubanco at 237 Ball Farm, we're right on the side of Joe's, and my yard is the one where all the water comes out of. It fills the entire backyard and comes down the driveway, goes into the street, crosses over to the other side where the barber shop and the tile place is, and then it goes down Buckingham to Main Street, probably cuts in over there at the condominiums there on Falls Terrace, and then it just continues to go down. It's not a, it's not a property owner problem, this is a town problem. This water is way too much every time it rains, just a little bit, or when you get these heavy rains that come in. This is like this every single time, and it's not a property owner problem, it's a town problem. There's so much water, it's unbelievable. It blew out the driveway last January, or last December, and we just had part of the driveway fixed in April. That cost us $23.50 to have that section of the driveway fixed, and then in July, it blew out another section of the driveway where this water runs, and, and then that was on the 17th of July, and it brought it down maybe about that much. And then we got the two hurricanes, and now the hole in the corner of the driveway where it comes out of the driveways about this, this deep. And I just have this big hole crater, which looked like a bomb went off. Every time it rains, the basement floods, I have to call the fire department. The last time we had to call the fire department to help pump out the basement, they were there from 10:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. And we have two subpumps that are constantly running during this whole thing, and in fact, the subpump is still running because it's taken up groundwater. This water is coming from somewhere, and it's not just because of my backyard. So that's all I want to say. Something needs to be done, and I appreciate everything that the town's trying to do, it's just I don't know what they're doing because nobody's said anything yet.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, we will close public participation and move on in the agenda to regular meeting minutes.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 19th, 2021.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone that's abstaining? We have one abstention and the motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ritalik seconded. Does anyone have any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
I abstain.
We have two abstentions, and the motion passes. Moving on to Chairman's comments. The first thing is we have a thank you note from Mr. Raza for a gift that was sent on behalf of the council members, and he acknowledged that to us. The next thing, the town received approximately $6 million from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, and the Town Council formed a committee to develop a plan for the use of the funds. So far, the committee members are Town Council members, myself and Mr. Ramsey, community members Gene King, Alan Mickle, and Eric Markowitz. Town staff would be the Town Manager, Mark Ramo, the Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director Susan Sapon, Water and Sewer Superintendent Vince Catarino, Deputy Fire Chief James Damaris Jr., and the Economic Development Coordinator Joseph Seacrest. We would like, Rachel, if you're free to serve on the committee, to ask you to do so also.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to do that.
So the Town Manager will be sending out contact information, trying to find a mutually convenient date for all of those people to have our first meeting so we can begin looking at the funds and how they're going to be allocated. We had questions from town resident with regard to several issues at the last meeting. One was, will the year-end adjustments on the 2021 budget be updated? Yes, they're done at audit time. So that's when the $2,838,000 and any other adjustments will show. What was the total cost of the renovation of this building to become our town hall? The total cost was $11,966,251.68. And the question was asked, what was the cost to move out of Depot Square and other town buildings to come here? And there was no cost because it was done by town employees and the Highway Department. So that cost was not, not tracked as a, as a separate cost to the town. Another question was, was the monthly rent for the Sunset Grill paid? And yes, it has been, and it was received by the treasurer, Town Treasurer, and deposited. And if you would like the account number, I'll be happy to provide that to you separately. Lastly, after the public hearing we had and the allocation of the over $2 million to the Board of Ed, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of comment and suggestions and criticism about what people knew, when they knew it, and how much they knew. So, in trying to be very transparent and informative to the town, the Board of Ed Chair and I talked, and we decided that as soon as they knew something, they would tell us, inform us. But formally, at least every quarter, but if anything happened in the interim, that we would be advised. To show you how tight we are keeping to that commitment, at 5:30 tonight, I got an email with information that is going forward to a Board of Ed Subcommittee Finance Meeting this evening, and it deals with increased special ed costs. Those of you that listened last year or were involved in that additional funding that had to be made, remember that a lot of it was because the town received a large influx of students that needed special services during last year. You need to know that after July 1 of this year, when the budget started, we've received another large, very number of families that have moved into town, as many as last year. They are working very diligently to identify all the services all of those students will need, and the costs involved, how much of the services required can be done in-house, and potentially how much reimbursement will be coming back because there is reimbursement from special ed so that they could have a handle on what might be unanticipated costs. All that's being broken down tonight for the Finance Committee, and it will be in writing, I assume, by the end of the week for the public to look at the actual numbers. But I would say we're talking probably unanticipated in the excess of a quarter of a million dollars so far. Okay. With that good news, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager for his report.
Just tapping.
Sue's got one more.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Water Town Town Council, September 2021 meeting, Mark Ramo, Town Manager. Just to address the issue at Buckingham and Ball Farm regarding the water, the amount of damage is devastating for the residents in that area. And just to respond to some of the questions or concerns that they had, is that although the town has not been able to accommodate the requests 100%, we have responded to all the calls. I've been out there three or four times to evaluate what's been going on. There is an Oakville Water and Sewer notation on the deed. I did give that to our town attorney, and I asked him to review that. He has told me several times that there is no responsibility on the town to fix this drainage issue. That being said, I did take it a step further, and I've done some research, and I was able to locate a FEMA grant which would cover up to 75% of the repairs. I've asked our engineering department to, on behalf of the residents, to apply for this grant. It's not something that they can apply for on their own, it's something that they can work as almost a pass-through for the town of Watertown, and we're in the process of doing that. The, the date that I had asked them to get this application in was for the October 31st deadline, that is the second to last deadline. They are working to meet that request. If not, we have another, we have until January 1st to submit another request. So if we're not able to meet that 31st, we will get it in for the January 1st, not that we're guaranteed that money. As far as the, the issue with the culvert being blocked, I did authorize Highway to go in with our new truck, VAC truck?
VAC.
VAC, VAC?
That's what we're having.
Okay. To go in and clean the line up. The problem was the back of, the culvert is approximately five and a half feet tall, so they sent an actual, a Highway person into the culvert, and he walked up to the blockage area. It's, the blockage is so great that the truck is not capable of taking care of that. To ask a Highway personnel to physically take that dam out would put his life at risk, and I chose not to take that chance. The 75-25% split to the repair, I don't recall that. There was an offer when this first happened, and I wanted to try and solve this for the residents. We had offered to, as we have in the past, we'd offered to provide pipe to fix it, but the residents would have to come together and, and give the additional cost to make that correction. That wasn't something that they were interested to do at the time. We, so I give, just to sum it up, I understand their frustration, they're, they've had some destruction to their homes, it's not their fault at this point either. We've had a tremendous amount of rain, and we're doing our best within the guidelines of the responsibility of the town to solve the problem for the residents.
Excuse me. Wait a minute, you can't speak out?
I don't know if you have any questions regarding that.
And, and Paul has looked into the deed and all of the property regulations?
Yes, I've asked a couple times because I have been presented with the deeds that the residents have come up with, and I've asked him to review that, and he still feels very strongly that there is no responsibility on the town to fix this problem.
Okay, well, I do remember that from at least 10 or 12 years ago at a Public Works meeting when we had the same issue.
Through the chair, if I could?
Yes, certainly.
Mr. Tom Hatcher, is there a way that the 25% that our own Town Highway Department can replace that piece of pipe? And what are we talking about for cost to replace that piece of pipe?
It was an estimate that was given to me by engineering without taking measurements. They figured the cost to repair this is going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
For an outside agency?
For an outside agency, yes. The, the problem that we run into is that if we were to go on private property and do this type of work, we then become responsible for the project, number one, and number two, how do we say no to the next resident who asks for this type of fix? So it's, for the town, it's a dilemma. We don't want to set precedent to go in on private property and to work.
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
First...
Put your mask on so we can understand you.
Sorry. First, the culvert itself, who put in the culvert originally? Do we know who actually installed it?
I'm going to have to ask our Highway Department Supervisor. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think it would be important to find out who they, who installed it, when it was installed. That's the first question. I have a couple of follow-ups.
Just, just to clarify that the culvert is not where the blockage is, the blockage is actually on the private property in a pipe that is reduced down to, Bob, how many, how big is the pipe on the property?
It looks to be about 36 inches in diameter.
And the, was the pipe installed by the same people that installed the culvert? Was it installed, is this?
We believe the pipe was installed in the previous, by the previous homeowner.
Okay.
Not Mrs. Huddubanco, somewhat a long time ago. I think what they, what they had at one time is they had an open channel, an open culvert that ran through the backyard, and it ran to a header wall, which is where the, the fence that they talked about got blown out. I believe right below that header wall is where the transition was from pipe to the header wall, which, and then starts the existing culvert that runs underneath Ordinary Joes. Right there is where the blockage is. They piped the culvert in the backyard to make a nice, smooth backyard, so maybe kids could play. could play or whatever. But they put pipe in the ground. And when they put the pipe up against the old header wall, that's right where the blockage is because it's a round pipe going up against a square culvert. And the blockage is actually sticks and logs because we walked up inside underneath Ordinary Joe's and looked at it. So it's not something that you could be, you could clean out with our VAC truck. It's not something that could be jet-rodded. It's something that either has to be dug down and taken out manually and the pipe replaced, or the other option, which is much more dangerous, like Mr. Ramo had said, you climb up underneath Ordinary Joe's and start pulling out those sticks and branches one by one until you release all the water. But you do that, and you take the chance of you getting washed down the culvert yourself.
Is this also the source of all of the water on Buckland Street itself during the rainstorm?
Correct.
The sewage and water?
Yes.
How long is this particular issue been, has this been something that's been recent because of the rainstorms becoming too much of a long system? Has this been something that's been going on for a number of years?
I believe the last three rainstorms in particular, starting July 17th, and the last one was September 2nd, they've been above and beyond the amount of water that we've had and the size of the storm.
Has it been flooding in?
There has been flooding in the past, but I believe that the more blockage you get in that pipe, and the more that comes down, it's like an old oil filter. The more dirt that gets in it, the less it's going to get through it. So at this point, it's probably, I would guess, 90% blocked. There's very little water coming through there. Most of it runs out, out of the pipe and over the ground.
Jeff, I know from Public Works meetings of at least 10 years ago...
Okay, so it's been something that's been...
This has been an issue.
It's just gotten, it's gotten to sort of a tipping point here because of the amount of rain we can get. My concern, of course, is that rain continues.
You get increasing amounts of rain every year, so this is going to become a larger and larger problem. On the 75-25, I don't know if, I would address this question too, but on the 75-25 repair costs, obviously, we're talking about 75% towards this federal FEMA grant. The 25% remaining, we're still probably talking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that would be, have to be absorbed by cost. This is something that the residents themselves would have to pay for? Is that...
That would be the intent of this grant, is that we would, we can ask the residents to agree to cover that 25%. I don't think it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars on that 25% cost share. If the project is, say, $200,000, you know, it would be a $50,000 cost share. You know, that we would look, and I'm continuing to look daily, on other grants that possibly we can apply for to fix this.
I suppose maybe the question should be, because it seems to me this is something that affects greater than just the residents, is obviously as they flood into Buckingham Street and flood into the public areas, that this, is this something that can be looked into in terms of what the town could cover, a percentage at least, the very least of some of this extra 25% cost? This is assuming that they get approved the FEMA grant in the first place. If such a grant is not approved, then we're kind of still looking at this problem as being something that isn't resolved and is going to be far too expensive for the residents themselves to pay for to repair.
I think that your thought process is very similar to what mine was when I first went down there the first day and looked at the damage, is that we want to fix it for the residents. Again, it's very sobering to talk to the town attorney and to come to the realization that if we do it for one, we're going to be responsible, and how do we say no to the next? That's the hard part.
True. That, that's true, but I think you also, there's an ancillary to it, and that is what affects public areas in terms versus to what affects just private areas. So if somebody's private basement or private land is flooding, and it's something that has to do with their own property, et cetera, or several properties, that's one thing. But when the water is now coming down Buckingham Street, flooding down the street like a waterfall, like a river, that could affect downstream, if you will, as well, then it enhances that problem. And I think it, yes, we could always look at the what-if kind of situations like that, but I would, I would venture to say that there's a public safety question here too with this. So it's something I think maybe we ought to be looking into a little bit as well.
I felt that, and I've explained that to the town as well, the town attorney. I went through the public safety issue because I am concerned with the amount of flooding that takes place in the upper Buckingham Street area by Ball Farm, and then in addition down in the lower area by Hillside, is that it is a public safety issue, or could be potentially with the amount of rains that we've been receiving.
Well, that's where, that's my, and again, it's maybe a personal opinion too, maybe a little more than it should be, but given that it affects the public at large, whether or not we're quote-unquote responsible for it in that legal sense, it may be something that we can afford it.
Do you have any other questions, Jeff?
No, I got, that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Would you like a written opinion from the town attorney?
Very definitely, we need that.
Yes.
Yeah. And I'd be interested to find out what the FEMA grant's going to cover, not only just financially, but actually, so that we know what work is left to be done, and we can estimate what the cost of that work might be.
Okay. I mean, I won't be able to identify that until the award.
No, obviously, you're not going to have that overnight, understood.
Right. Okay.
Do you have anything else in your report?
Of course I do. We'll make it as quick as possible. Just to update, Taft School has made an unrestricted contribution to the town as they do every year in the amount of $185,000, reflecting the increase of $5,000 from last year. In your packet is a memo from Lisa Carew advising that Thomason Savings Bank approve the grant application submitted by Mrs. Carew in the amount of $1,500 for entertainment at the Watertown Fall Festival. Just like to thank Director Carew for taking the initiative to apply for that grant. I've scheduled FOIA training. It's scheduled for Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, September 22, 2021, at 6:30 at the Town Hall, Town Council Chambers. This training is open to the public, town employees, council members, and commissioners. Currently, we have 19 participants, and we will record the training so that employees can view it on work time. If you are not able to attend and would like to submit a question, please email that question, and I can get that answered the night of the training if you're unable to make it. I am also in discussions with the Law Office of Pullman &amp; Colme to develop a training program surrounding Robert's Rules and its application to FOIA for our commissioners and council members. Steel Brook Greenway put out for requests for quotes. We've received all our quotes and distributed to the committee members for their review. That was for the engineering design project for Steel Brook Greenway. CCM Convention is currently scheduled for November 30 and December 1 at the Mohegan Sun. If any of the council members are interested in attending, please let my office know. We have a tentative agreement with the White Collar Union. The union leadership will be presenting it to the union body, and we will get an answer shortly. Communication, union talks are ongoing. Public Works Department, I want to announce that I've made an offer, and the offer has been accepted for the position of Department of Public Works. I had wanted to announce his name tonight, but he asked to wait another week just so he can inform his employee that he will be resigning and taking the job here. So the anticipation start date of our Department of Public Works will be October of this year. Our organizational chart, changes have been made to the organizational chart. Attorney Jessel is reviewing the changes, and I anticipate forwarding those changes for your approval at the October 4 Council Meeting. The Fire Department, on December 17, 2020, the Watertown Fire Department members responded to a structure fire at $570 Buckingham Street, Oakville. While working diligently together, they saved the life of Margaret Anderson, who had been trapped in the structure, rendered unconscious and unresponsive. Chief Bromley nominated responding members to the Connecticut Firefighters Association for a lifesaving award, and on 9/9/2021, the nomination was accepted by the committee. The following members, Deputy Chief James Demarest, Captain CJ Palmer, Lieutenant David Hart, Lieutenant Joseph LaFreniere, Lieutenant Kevin Pro, firefighter Gary Adams, and firefighter Scott Traver have been awarded a lifesaving award and were honored at the Connecticut Firefighters Association Convention on Saturday, September 18. So congratulations to those members, and thank you for doing what you do. I do have two additions that came in right before our meeting. Just to let you know, we have a bat infestation in the Town Hall.
Mother, goodness gracious.
We did get one quote to try and get rid of our bats, and we're at the $7,500 mark.
And where might they be located?
There may be quite a few above us.
Oh, nice, thanks.
But the majority are on the right-hand side of the building as you look at the building. So we are going to get a couple more quotes to see if we can bring that price down. Also, when we did do the Town Hall project, we did not replace all the gutters. So we are having a problem with the gutters on the rear of the building, which is creating, is part of the reasons why we're having some water issues in the basement. So we are getting quotes on those items to not only cap them, but replace the old ones that need to be replaced. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Thank you. Let's move on to the agenda item, new business item A.
I move to add to the agenda item AF to consider a bid waiver for the purchase of a multi-hog machine from D.C. Bates Equipment Company utilizing the Sourcewell Government Bidding and Purchasing Program for an amount not to exceed $115,495.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Edward Norton, 669 Buckingham Street, Oakville, as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2022. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Philip Mailer.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Amanda Manford, 319 Thomason Road, Unit 80, Watertown, as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2022. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Michelle Wallace.
And we need a second on this, please.
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously.
I move to support the Watertown Lands, sorry, the Watertown Land Trust application to the State of Connecticut for a grant to assist in funding the purchase of 40-acre parcel of land bounded by Linkfield and Francine Roads for open space, and also set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, October 4, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. at Watertown Town Hall to consider an appropriation from the Open Space Fund in the amount of $50,000 for the purchase of 40-acre parcel bounded by Linkfield and Francine Roads. Such purchase would be for open space.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Sangree, is that you in the back? Would you like to make some comments or give us any information on this request?
I get to take this off. We want to purchase the Gustafson portion of Pec Swamp. Pec Swamp is a very unusual and very large swamp in the north end of town, and it drains into Wigwam Reservoir. So I have a letter here, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, but it's from the Superintendent of Waterbury Water Company. And one thing he says is Wigwam is one of five drinking water reservoirs used for raw water prior to treatment and is the source of potable water for Waterbury. It is also our least favorable in regard to overall water quality. This acquisition, our buying Pec Swamp, will help to protect the watershed area surrounding the Wigwam Reservoir and should help to improve the overall raw water quality. So there's one reason we would like to purchase this land. There are other reasons. I've heard people tonight talking about terrible damage from rainstorms, and one thing that swamps do is they hold rainwater and let it drain gradually rather than come down in a great big cascade that makes problems for people. Pec Swamp does that very well, and we would like to keep it as pristine as possible so that there will be less climate-influenced flooding that Watertown has already suffered. Other reasons are that it's a chunk in a very large piece of open space. We own land already on Plungess and Francine Road. That's about 26 acres, and that's partly a hayfield, but it's also part of Pec Swamp. Gustafson's property is preserved by the State Department of Agriculture. Then the Water Company land is the next big chunk. I think that's about 700 acres. And then the State, Manitowoc State Forest, is an even larger chunk of open space. So this creates a very large corridor for wildlife that need a lot of space to move about in. It's also helpful for migratory birds if they have a bit of open space to move through so that they don't have to encounter window strikes or just the other effects of houses and development and people around. So for those reasons, we would like to purchase this piece of Pec Swamp. The ask, the appraised value is $120,000, and we're applying to the state DEEP for an open space grant. If we get that grant, it's usually about 40% of what the value is. And so we're asking the Town Council for $50,000. There'll still be further expense to us, and there are things like title searches and title insurance, appraisal costs, surveying costs, which are not covered by the grant. But the Open Space Fund right now has, I think it's $206,000, given by developers in lieu of land when they are subdividing for development. And so we are asking for a quarter roughly of that fund to help pay for this purchase, which I think will benefit the town and future generations. And land that the Land Trust owns is owned in perpetuity, so it's never going to be developed, and it's never going to be used for anything except for open space. And it can be used for educational purposes or recreational purposes, but it will never have any commercial use or housing or anything like that.
Thank you, Gil. Appreciate that explanation. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Through the chair. You mentioned an appraisal for $120.
Yeah.
Two questions. Who did the appraisal and who paid for the appraisal?
Well, the Land Trust paid for the appraisal, and it was done by Rob Bartosz from Canton. I don't know if you're familiar with him. He is someone that the state likes to work with. And when we've gotten these grants in the past, we've had to have two appraisals. They've changed the rules now, so you only need one, but then you need an appraisal review so that another approved appraiser looks at the first guy's work to see if it makes sense and if he has suggested... sense and if he has suggestions. And the person who has done that is Tom Henry, and he's formerly from Connecticut. He now lives in South Carolina. He had a couple of suggestions.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question, just on the actual parcel of land, the location of the land. Is this on the north side of Francine Road, or is this south side of Francine Road? Francine and Linkfield?
Well, I would call it on the west side, the west side of Linkfield. And if you went down Francine Road, which is a dirt road, you'd be heading west.
Yeah, okay.
And then, it would be to the south of Francine Road.
Okay.
And it's very extensive, in a neighborhood where there's a lot of development. So, I counted the houses on Linkfield, and there's 65 houses before you get to that piece. But then, there's also Smith Pond Road, Honey Hill Road, Joshua's Town Road. So, there are many, many people in that neighborhood who probably wouldn't go on an extensive trip through the state forest looking for birds. But if it were right in their neighborhood, and people -- a birder from Watertown named John Marshall has been to this property several times. He's seen eagles there. He's seen meadow larks who are on the threatened list. He's seen bobolings, and many others. So, it really is a birder's paradise.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have a presentation by one of our own.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to introduce Lauren Laporta. She's Administrative Assistant for the Town Manager's Office. Lauren actually took chairmanship of the committee to set up the website for us, and I would just like to say thank you publicly for all the hard work she did. She really did a wonderful job. The other members of the website committee were Kim Calabrese, our Fire Marshal, Lisa Dalton, our Town Clerk, Lauren Frazier, an Administrative Assistant in the Assessor's Office, Carrie Godfrey, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, Megan Giuliano, Assistant Finance Director, Carla Hamel, Tax Collector, Anthony Montagno, Foreman, Highway Department, and Joe Seacrest, our Economic Development. So, again, Lauren, thank you, and give them a great tour.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the introduction, Mr. Ramo. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here to present the new town website on behalf of the Social Media Website Committee.
Lauren, is there a microphone where you are?
Can you hear better now? Okay. So, just to give you a timeline, we -- the website committee began this process in the middle of March. The new website was launched the second week of August. During that timeframe, the committee went through different town websites and looked over designs and features. We also went through the whole design process, so this was a whole new website with a whole new website company. So, we didn't even use -- we weren't using the old website, so everything was brand-new. Content was migrated, content was updated, and added. Some of the committee members went through website training. After the website training, the website was handed over to us, and then the committee polished up the website. Next slide, please, Mike. Basically, the next slides are going to go over the style and format and the features, new versus old. Next slide, please. So, this is the homepage of the new website. If you're familiar with the old website, you can see right off the bat that it's -- this new website is more updated and modern, visually pleasing, bright and eye-catching. The webpages are all formatted the same in uniform font. The last two might not seem like a big deal, but on our end, it is a big deal. Next slide. So, here's examples of the Board and Commission agendas and minute pages. The bottom left is the new website, and the top right is the old. Right now, in the new website, we have slots for each agenda, motion, minutes, and cancellations. So, on the old website, there were no slots for that, so it was up to the Board and Commission who was posting the minutes to put those in, which often led to not-uniformed website pages. Next slide, please. This is an example of our old homepage. It's very busy. It's kind of overwhelming. Things that are important are very small. It's also was outdated. Next slide. This, again, is the new homepage. It's modern and updated. It's visually pleasing. The top where the picture is, is actually a slide toolbar to show off pictures, and there's a lot of great pictures of the town featured on that toolbar. Next slide. These are -- this is an example of the department pages, so the left is the old website and the right is the new website. All department pages are now formatted the same way. Each department page has a contact bar at the very top, and in that contact bar, there's the address, the phone and the fax, and also the hours. There's also contact information, which is every employee in that department, as well as general information, which gives an overview of what that department does. There's also related links on the left-hand side for each department, so that's a good tool for visitors to use to find things that they might need throughout each department. The old website, related links were kind of just spread throughout the page, and users had to search through the page to find what they need. So, some new features, the homepage alert bar, which it's kind of hard to see. Mike, can you move the Zoom toolbar? Thank you. So, this is something that can be toggled on and off. It's actually been very helpful. So, the first week after we launched was when we had all that rain, so we kind of alerted visitors to check the event boxes for a more elaborate -- more elaborate -- more elaborate information on how to be prepared for the storm. It also can be used for reminders in an emergency situation. There's also the Quick Links toolbar, which is right here, so the agendas and minutes, registered to vote, absentee ballots, viewer pay taxes, the GIS system, e-notify sign-up, which is something that visitors can sign up to get notifications, and also employment that can be changed, and we can add more quick links if we wanted to. That's nice because it makes items easy to find, and it helps users get to important pages quickly. So, the next feature is actually an ADA accessibility menu. It's on the homepage, and it's throughout all the other department pages. It allows visitors to change the contrast, enlarge the text, highlight links, text spacing, a larger cursor, line height, and align text. Another new feature, there's integrated social media sharing. So, if we're featuring something on the website, we can share it directly to the town's social media pages. There's also documents on demand. One more, two more, Mike. Okay. So, there's also documents on demand. That's actually a third-party addition to the website. It's basically where all of our archived minutes and agendas are going to be. On the old website, I mean, we had back, you know, all the way back on one page, which could kind of be chaotic. On the new website, it's just going to be the current year agendas and minutes, and then visitors are able to search documents on demand for the archived minutes and agendas. I actually just sent another batch, so I'm hoping in a few weeks that should be up and running. There's also -- so, as I mentioned, the formatted agendas and minutes pages. There's a larger calendar and events view, and there's an event box for each page, which is shown here. So, on the Town Manager page, I have stay up to date with town happenings and linked to the town's social media pages. The Town Clerk, for example, can use that box for June, which is Dog Licensing Month, and she can link to an application. Next slide, please. Just some feedback, I created a Google form. We received a lot of verbal feedback, which was all great, and you can see here, we got fives and fours for the digital feedback. Next slide. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Anyone?
Wonderful job.
Great job, Lauren. And we should -- we should mention to any councilperson, if you have any change of address, phone number, or anything that needs updating, we need to let Lauren know, not to let that pass so that it becomes outdated information.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the next item on the agenda for a motion.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $20,830 for tax refunds.
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
I'll second it.
Again, any questions? Corrections, hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And to the items that we added?
I move to approve a bid waiver for the purchase of a multi-hog machine from DC Bates Equipment Company for the Public Works and Parks Department utilizing the Sourcewell Government Bidding and Purchasing Program for an amount not to exceed $115,495 as approved through the budget as a lease purchase.
And we need a second.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question. The purpose for this is snow removal, correct? The purpose for this is snow removal? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is this replacing something that's already in place, or is this to --
Yes.
An addition to?
Bob Grandfrey, Highway Superintendent. Yes, this is to replace what we currently use, a skid steer loader with a snow blower attachment, which the snow blower attachment is no longer usable. Also, the skid steer is not the ideal machine to go on and off sidewalks with. This machine is more purpose-built for that, and it does come with different attachments. So, it doesn't have to be used just for a snow blower or a snow plow.
It may be in this paperwork, but what's the typical life expectancy of this type of machine?
15 to 20 years.
Okay, so this is a long-term investment?
Correct.
Not just something that'll be five years and here comes the replacement?
Correct, yes.
Do we have any other -- any of other of these, or something like in our --
Arsenal? No.
Okay.
Nothing like it.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Recording stopped.